We're on a WebEx teleconference meeting. I will call to order the Brainerd City Council Meeting and we will start with roll call.
Ted Erickson.
Lambert?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Johnson? And Bevins?
Here.
Excellent, that brings us to-
Can you get Bevins? Yes.
Bevins?
Angry went home.
I joined the Baxter City Council.
So, so, uh, just in defense, I covered up Wayne's name so that I would not call him during roll call until after he took the oath, and I accidentally covered up Bevins in addition. My fault.
My wife does that.
Okay, we got Bevins' presence. We'll move now to the next item, which is item number three, administer the oath of office to Alderman Ward Three, Wayne Erickson.
All right, Mr. Erickson, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Wayne Erickson, solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
Constitution
of the United States
United States
the Constitution of the State of Minnesota
of the State of Minnesota
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
faithfully discharge the duties
of the Office of City Council, Ward Three
of the City Council, Ward Three
of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota
of Minnesota
to the best of my judgment and ability
and my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
Well, welcome, Wayne. We're back to a full council. So, Mayor, you could just leave now. We won't be having any tie votes today. Next up is item number four, approval of the agenda.
So move Pritchett.
Second, Bevins.
Motion, Pritchett, second Bevins to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Ted Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Pritchett? Yes.
Wayne Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Lambert, so moved to accept.
Second.
We've got a motion from Lambert, a second from Bevins to adopt the consent calendar by roll call. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Ted Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Wayne Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, and that motion carries. That brings us to item number six on the agenda, which is Community Member of the Month. We actually did need you here, Mayor Bevins. Take it away.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna let David Chansky present this here, and I believe that Connie has a video for us as well.
Do we want to do the video first?
Why don't we explain what the video is before this-
Yep, I can do that, Mr. Mayor. And I'll let President Johnson, if you want to step in at any point as well, as this was your nominee. So, as you, the council knows, Community Member of the Month, we started that last year. We haven't gotten many recently. However, Tina J. was nominated for the Community Member of the Month Award for her social distancing dance party, which she held on Monday, April 27th, and we do have a little clip of that party that we can play. Sean?
Looks like they're all doing the robot.
It was a lot smoother when it was just three of us in here.
Connie, you're muted.
Get the Johnson family back here. I could play it all night, but we probably need to get some business done.
Yeah, so I just want to say super fast that, you know, when we first talked about bringing this program into place, this is exactly the type of thing we were looking for. It's not about the huge things that people do for their community. It's about the little things that people do every day to help their neighbors and to help those around them. And I'm so glad that Councilman Johnson was able to live across the street from this when it happened, because this is exactly what we're looking for from our Community of the Month members. So, we want to thank Tina J. I know she wasn't here, able to be here tonight, but we want to thank her and just encourage everyone that's out there to nominate your neighbors for this sort of thing, because this is exactly what we're looking for. We want to celebrate the small improvements that people are making in the community's lives.
Mr. Chair?
Pritchett?
Is that, or will that be posted on the city website, the dance itself?
I believe the city administrator got permission from the copyright owner of the video to post it, so it may end up there.
I did. I asked the woman who posted it if she would give us permission to share it, and she did give me written permission that she would.
Excellent, and thanks, Mayor Bevins, for recognizing Tina. I've lived next door to Tina and Mike J. since I bought this house 14, 15 years ago, and I would say almost every month they could be recognized as an outstanding neighbor in some way, whether it's shoveling snow in the winter or any number of things. They're just great neighbors to have. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is Council Committee Reports. We'll start with the Personnel and Finance Committee, Alderman Pritchett.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We have five items on our agenda, and we'll jump right into it. Item number one is payment of bills. You know, the only interesting thing on there, there are a lot of payments to people who had leased parking spots, as we had decided to give them back their money. So, our motion is to basically authorize payment of bills as presented, and I so move.
July second, Stunek.
Motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, our second item is the additional general liability policy. Finance Director Hillman, if you want to give us a little bit of information on this.
All right, at our last council meeting, we had our local agents from Weisner Ingel with us, and they presented the policy for the March 1st, 2020, to February 28th, 2021 policy renewal. At that time, they offered that, or made it known, that the city council could purchase an additional billion-dollar excess liability coverage for an annual premium of about $35,600. At that time, council decided not to take additional, or to take action on the additional coverage, as we wanted to discuss to BPU. In this packet was information provided by our local agents on what the additional rider would cover, and it was found on page two of the attachment to the agenda request. We had a couple of questions that were not able to be answered before the packet went out, such as, what is meant by downstream liability for the dam? And what could be an example of this? And this would provide coverage for if a dike or a levee or something burst downstream and it was due to the operation of our hydrodam. There are 11 cities, or 11 members from the League of Minnesota Cities that do purchase this downstream liability, but they have not been any losses to date. Another thing is, has the city ever had a claim that wasn't covered by the statutory limits? The City of Brainerd has not had any claims that have not been covered by the tort limit. However, there's been several examples in the previous years dealing with police officer shootings, that kind of stuff, that have been in excess of the coverage and would not be covered by the tort, coverage that we currently have. Another question we have was, how many cities are sized purchases, purchased this additional policy? And we were told by Weisner Ingel that there are approximately 61 cities that are in the same population as Brainerd between that $10,000 and $25,000, and a little less than half of those members purchased the additional coverage. Staff did discuss with BPU. They did not think that we needed to purchase the additional policy at this time, and so staff's recommendation would be not to purchase the additional rider for the March 1st, 2020, through February 28th, 2021 insurance policy, since the rider was not budgeted for 2020. And then we could discuss it again when we are working on the 2021 budget, so if council decides that we can have this be a budgeted expense.
Any other questions or concerns? Davey there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Did something happen?
Nothing's happening.
The motion coming out of committee, and looking at this, we thought it was intriguing, but we didn't really think that we wanted to go with it this year because we didn't budget for it. So, the motion would be to not purchase the additional rider for March 1st, 2020, February 28th, 2021, the insurance policy, since the additional rider was not budgeted in 2020. Staff would like, and then also motion, in same motion, that staff would like council to discuss the rider again for the March 1st, 2021, through February 28th, 2022 policy year during the 2021 budget process. And I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Erickson. Discussion on the additional general liability insurance policy. Seeing none, I just kind of want to ask Corky, we're not going to need the additional liability this year. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, that takes us to item three, which is the building inspector promotion. And so basically, what's coming out of committee is the recommendation of promoting Jason Stockinger to be placed on step six, and the reasoning for that is, we cannot, we have to place him to the closest step without reducing his wage. And so, that would, he would need, in order to go in another step, he would have to get two achieves expectations and one exceeds expectations to go to step seven. However, he would be receiving colas. Just a little more background, there were nine applicants for the position, five of whom were qualified. And then, as of right now, they're not looking at backfilling the position for a few months. They want to revisit that in July, because they believe that with the PS and A software, it's saving time and they might not have to backfill it. So, we're actually could see some budget savings from, you know, some expenditures earlier. So, did I cover everything, Mr. Chansky? All right, so the motion is to approve the promotion of Jason Stockinger to building inspector at step six of the building inspector wage schedule, and I so move.
Second.
Stunek.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek. Look, great job, Alderman Pritchett. Your first meeting as PNF Chair, and you're already saving us. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
K Bevins, yes.
And Johnson?
That motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, that takes us to item number four, which is to select a broker to assist with the 2021 health insurance proposals, and I'll let HR Director Schubert kind of handle this one.
Sounds good. Good evening. So, as many of you are aware, our health insurance in fact, over the last five years, they have increased almost 50%. Just to give you an idea on that, for many years, we had some of the lowest rates in the source well pool. We currently now are some of the highest rates. In order to be financially responsible, a core group of the city BPU and HRA management team was formed, and we recommended that we do a market check on our health insurance plans, as well as our rates, to see if they're competitive in what we should do. In reviewing our options, we reviewed what a couple other entities have done, specifically the League of Minnesota Cities, as well as the City of Marshall. We knew, or I knew, that both entities had recently done this type of market review, and when I contacted them, they informed me that they actually utilized a broker to do this process for them. Health insurance is very complex. It isn't that we can just compare apples to apples. There are several different types of plans. There's union plans. We also have something called PEAP in Minnesota. All those different things are hard to compare. And so, that's why they utilize a broker, and that is what we are asking for. We had sent out a request for proposals for a broker to assist us in this process. We sent it out to four brokers. Three of them were recommended by John Oaks from Integrity Benefits. Integrity helps us with our ancillary benefits, and he knew that these brokers have helped other public entities in the last couple of years. We also sent it to our current broker, RG or Strong Insurance, as well, to see how that would come in. All four of them submitted their RFPs. As we reviewed them, being the management team, our team unanimously recommended retaining North Risk Partners to assist us in this process. Although they are not the lowest bid, the team felt the North Risk Partners proposal was the most comprehensive. Appears that they had the most experience performing this type of review. Their fees were one of the lowest costs submitted, and we also appreciate that they have a local office as well. And that local office is Klein and Fleming. A couple of things to note, they did offer two options with their proposal. One was for the one-time fee for $6,000. They also offered a second proposal as well. If that alternate was, if we wanted to utilize their services for a full-time broker going forward. At this point, staff is not recommending to do a full-time broker, but if they decide to do it, they would allocate that $6,000 towards their 2021 fee. I also felt it was important to clarify a little bit of what our current broker does and why we pay them. Strong Insurance, they have helped us for over 30 years. They currently help us primarily with helping with open enrollment if employees have questions about our health plans, or if they have issues throughout the year, and kind of also helps when an employee leaves, to help them understand their insurance options. So, that is the basic information. Then, staff's recommendation is to utilize North Risk Partners for a 2021 health insurance RFP process.
Basically, in a nutshell, we kind of want to test the waters in health insurance, because the rates have always been going up, and staff feels that the type of language that's used in a lot of these is outside their area of expertise, which is one of the reasons why we want to look at a broker. And I do have a motion if we're ready.
Yep.
All right. The motion is to approve retaining North Risk Partners as broker to assist with our 2021 health insurance request for proposals process in the amount of $6,000 from the general fund, general allocated professional services. That is right, yep. With a cost split between the city BPU and HRA based on the number of full-time employees, and I so-
Ted, second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Ted. I have one question. So, $6,000 is the total contract price. You're taking a portion of the $6,000 out of the city's unallocated service fund?
The city's cost would be about $3,000.
For about half of the employees. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, that takes us to our last item, the Minnesota State Investment Fund's one-time exception. Well, it's actually the one-time exception revisited. Last August, we looked at this, and it was decided to revisit in the spring. We have 2020. If you guys can remember, we retained 100, approximately 174,000 last year and returned 43,000. Now, in looking at it, the state says that we would receive an additional $6,581.54, and of that, we could retain $5,265.23. So, the motion from staff is basically to author, or the motion from the committee is to authorize staff to proceed with the renewed opportunity to utilize the one-time except, exception from Minnesota, from the state MIF fund balance, and use those as we have the other ones to promote economic development, especially in, you know, with the COVID crisis. And I so move.
Nice second, Stunek.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek, to utilize the one-time exception for a second time. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you, Alderman Pritchett. That brings us to Safety and Public Works Committee, Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We also have five items, but it will only seem like two compared to that lengthy PNF meeting. Is the, first item is the bi, bi-annual bridge safety inspection proposals. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, approving the proposal from Bolton and making the proposed cost not to exceed $2,400, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Bevins, a second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this comes from Construction Fund 401.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the contract towing services. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, enter into an agreement, a two-year agreement, authorizing signatures on the agreement document with Collins Brothers Towing of Brainerd, and I so move.
Lambert, second.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Lambert. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Just that you can see, if you scroll down one page, you'll see Engineer Sandy's put a side-by-side comparison, and you'll see Collins Brothers is significantly less expensive. One clarification, they're not of Brainerd, which, you know, they're from the other guys. And if, I wish that there was any way we could pick a local business, that we would, but the price difference is too significant. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to go with Collins Brothers Towing? Vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is the cross-jurisdictional maintenance agreement with Corwin County. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, approve the attached maintenance agreement with Corwin County, and authorize the proper signatures on the agreement document, and I so move.
Erickson, second.
A motion by Bevins, a second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? This is simply where there's a number of roads, short pieces of roads, that it makes more sense for us to do some of them, even though the county roads, and the county does their maintenance on some of the city roads, basically based on geography and cost savings. We actually end up with about three tenths of a mile of road that we win on, but it makes purely economic sense to take care of the roads where we fit geographically.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Thank you. Item number four is Improvement 20-01, the 2020 Seal Code Project Authorization to Bid, and the motion is to accept staff's recommendation, authorizing advertisement for bids for the 2020 Seal Code Project, with bids to be received and opened on Friday, June 5th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chambers at City Hall, and I so move.
Lambert, second.
A motion by Bevins and a second by Lambert. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just on the dollars and cents, we normally budget $150,000 for this project. As you can see, the engineer's estimate is $170,000. However, we expect budgeting, or I mean proposals, to come in where we've teamed up with, is this the one we team up with the county, Mr. Sandy? We expect estimates to come in closer to the 150, and if we have to, we can drop streets off the thing, rather than scramble to try and add streets when the bids are coming under budget. Thank you.
Any discussion? Paul, you should have purchased a bunch of oil when they were paying us like $40 a barrel for your street projects. Saved us money for years. Seeing no other comments, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Alderman Bevins.
Our final, our final agenda item is the downtown landscaping contract revised quotes. We asked Community Development Director Chansky to go back and talk to the bidders, and the motion is to direct staff to contract with Copper Creek Landscaping for downtown landscaping services in the amount of $6,177, and I so move.
Erickson, second.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract. Is there any discussion? Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is roughly $10,000 under what they had originally bid. The cost is fully assessed to downtown property owners, and thanks to Dave Chansky for going back for a second. So, thank you.
Excellent, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries.
End of report.
Good job, Alderman Bevins. That seemed like three, three and a half, I think. Unfinished business, 8A Committee Recommendations, recommended by Mayor Dave Bado.
Yes, you have all been waiting for me to speak, and I am here. First of all, we have, I have a recommendation of Dan Hegstead to the Cable TV Advisory Committee. Dan Hegstead is a perfect fit for that group with his background, so that is my recommendation for that group. Dan Hegstead to the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Pritchett, so moved.
Second, Bevins.
Second.
Motion by Pritchett, a second by Bevins to affirm the recommendation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to 8B, call for applicants. Mayor Bado.
All right, so obviously applicants, applications are available at City Hall on our website, so you can find them there. There are plenty of wonderful things that you can get involved in here at the city, but what we are currently looking for, Cable TV Advisory Committee, although we just filled a slot for that, we are looking for terms expiring in 2021 and 2022. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2020, one expiring in 2021, and one term expiring 2022, excuse me, and another term expiring in 2023. A lot of terms expiring at a lot of different times on that one. And then we also, those, those all expire at the end of the year each year. This is a doozy and a beautiful one. The Economic Development Authority, we have one term expiring on the 7th of September of year 2020, and now stop me if you've heard this, but the reason why we do that is because that's when that group was formed, way back in the day. We're also looking for a, members for the Water Tower Committee as well.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to 8C, City Hall and Police Department Remodel Projects Updates. Paul, probably?
Yeah, that's me, Mr. President. Thank you. I think Kevin was dialing in right now as we speak. While he does that, project, we do have something we would like to discuss with the City Council that is a gender request. With the chances that social distancing practices will have to continue for some time after the pandemic, staff feels that it's probably prudent to look at installation of temporary or permanent glass barriers to protect staff and the public from close interactions at the front counters on second and third floor. Before the meeting, we went in to Gully Glass and asked for some quotes, either for a temporary plexiglass barrier that can be removed or a permanent glass barrier that could be present at all times even after the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff's interpretation of this is that while a temporary barrier is a little bit cheaper, the permanent barrier also assists with some security issues with staff behind the counter. With the window open right now, there isn't a barrier for people to jump over the counter. And so there is that portion of that while protecting during flu or potential for COVID-19 outbreaks. The barrier also helps with the security standpoint after we have the card readers and everything installed and obviously allowing for proper social distancing once we all return to work. And so from that perspective, we would recommend that the installation of the permanent glass barrier on second and third floor for a total cost of $1,586. And then I hope that Kevin during this time is called in. I guess the council can discuss that first.
Yeah, Paul, I'm, I joined.
All right, welcome, welcome, Kevin. We'll, I think we'll handle this, this plexiglass glass decision first. Pritchett, you have a motion?
I have a motion, move to approve the purchase and installation of the permanent glass fixtures.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Lambert to go with the just under $1,600 option to have the permanent glass at the, at the counter instead of temporary glass. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Pros and cons of temporary versus permanent?
I can answer that by name, Mr. President.
Please do, Paul.
The plexiglass, a lot of times, has a lot of sauce gene characteristics that's hard, it's hard to keep clean in a lot of circumstances, from what I've heard. So that is one thing. The permanent glass, also, the pros to that is that security of staff behind even if the doors are locked.
I'm not sure how far out you are, but I will tell her to pull over somewhere for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think the, I'd add another con of the permanent glasses. It's a, it's a physical barrier between the government and citizens, and it's kind of, it's unfortunate. I don't like dealing with people behind glass. I, I like more personal interactions, but given it's a thousand dollar difference, it will probably be social distancing for at least a year or two, if not longer. Might as well go with the, the professional looking options. I always think plexiglass looks a little tacky. Any other thoughts, Pritchett?
Always looks like you want to push somebody into the boards with the plexiglass. I was just, I was going to say too, that we can't look into the future, but this is something that, like you said, we might be doing for a couple of years, easy, so.
Mr. Chair, and I think it's, this is Lambert. I would think it'd be better to be proactive on, on this issue for the same reasons you guys have suggested, so. I think I agree too. I'd rather see people face-to-face, but hopefully they'll do a little bit better on what we're seeing now in these temporaries, that it won't be so awkward.
Thank you. Any other, any other thoughts? On the motion to go with the permanent $1,600 solution? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Okay, back to Paul or Kevin, on their update.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, this is Kevin Curry with Contagity Group with an update on the projects. I'll start with City Hall. We completed the third-floor office area remodel on Friday. We did a punch list. Today, the space was cleaned and the city will start moving into it tomorrow. Also ongoing at City Hall is work in the boiler room, replacing that physical plant equipment there. I believe this week, they're also trying to start up the air handling equipment, the cooling system that's on the roof of the garage area and get the air handling units that are in the ceiling of all the office spaces on all the floors up and running. So we'll have the heating and cooling capacity, I believe, at the end of this week or the first part of next week. And that system's kind of separate from the unit that's going up in the penthouse and the new boiler. It has heating and cooling capacity without the boiler and the fresh air system up above. Work continues in the northeast stair area. We're painting in there this week, and I will be putting the flooring down soon after that. And we also will be starting the renovation of the council chambers after we move out of that area tomorrow. We can start that demo later this week. The demo in there is limited to the flooring and the light fixtures. Otherwise, we'll be just doing new paint, new flooring, some wood trim, associated audiovisual upgrades. And that would be it in that space. So that space will be working there will go fairly quickly because there's no mechanical to speak of in that space. The roofing work is scheduled to start the week of May 11th, and we'll coordinate that with the mechanical work in the penthouse. And after that work is done with the roof, that will free us up to start the exterior improvements, cleaning and tuck pointing the exterior of the building. Any questions on the work at City Hall?
Yeah, Kevin, I have one. With the AV upgrades in the council chambers, are we going to have the same functionality we had at the county courthouse? I don't know who can answer that question, but it's just a question I have.
Sean on the line?
Sean's here, yeah. I'll take a stab at it. More or less, yes. We have a slightly different appliance that we're going to be trying, but we'll still be streaming to YouTube, and it is yet to be determined if we'll be broadcasting to cable or not. We hope to.
Have we figured out if there's a cable connection possible?
There's still cable coming in the boiler room downstairs, so it's still a possibility. What's happened is changes at the high school. The head-end unit has changed, so there is some pretty significant uphill climb there, but hopefully, once this whole thing passes, we can figure out what's possible.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Does anybody else have questions of Kevin or anybody on the remodel projects?
One quick question. Are we on schedule, behind, ahead? Where are we at?
I would say we're on schedule. I think we met pretty much the dates that we established going in. You know, the, the city staff working from home has made that less critical. But it's also allowed work to proceed more quickly, so I would say if you look at where we are compared to where we're going to be, we're about on track.
Good, thank you.
One other thing I will say is we've had a few small change order items. We haven't written any change orders since the last upgrade, so budget-wise, we're, we're on track with, with, I would say, fairly insignificant cost adjustments to, for change orders.
That's good. Any other questions?
Okay, move on to the police station. There again, we were, we benefited from the silver lining and all of the, the disruptions that the virus has brought, is that we were able to work in the police department more easily without having to allow for access by the public. So we were able to work on the new entry and the secure window after reception desk without spending the money to create a temporary access for the public. We completed the, the first part of the project was to create a new space for the server. The server was relocated this past weekend, so we cleared that hurdle. I think Sean has probably reported that that went well. That freed up the invest, or the interview space for remodel, which has started. Should have started today, actually. Work in the investigators' offices is ongoing. I think we're taping drywall there. And when we finish those spaces, we will go into the squad room and work on the windows and the interior finishes in the squad room. So what, what that has done for us is basically we're there and able to do work as the police department staff is able to give us space to work. So we're able to work at the pace that they can give us and still have their ongoing operations work. So it's, it's been good for both parties, actually, to be able to continue work without demobilizing and coming back later and having different separate phases. It's basically just rolled into one continuous phase.
Excellent. Any questions on the police department project? Okay, anything else, Kevin?
I can't, I can't think of anything. I really, my hat's off to the staff of both City Hall and the police station. They've been very, very great to work with, open to options and, and, you know, considering whatever it takes to get the work done and, and being, being a very good partner in, in the projects.
Good, that's good to hear. No more comments or questions from the council or mayor? Seeing none, thank you for stopping in tonight, Kevin.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Just to 8D, COVID-19 update and discussion to Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. And so, as you know, the, the governor's initial executive order 2020, which was directing Minnesota to stay at home, the City Council adopted a couple of things, one of which was our stay-at-home work plan. Then on April 6, it was amended to coincide with the governor's timeline, basically. And so I sent you out a memo this afternoon, and first of all, my apologies for it being late. The governor did come out with his latest order 2048 on Thursday afternoon, and then we met as a team, including Alderman Pritchett, both on Friday and this morning, to try to come back to the council with some recommendations. In the beginning part of that memo, I did kind of list out the things that the, the actions that the council has taken to date. And so I'm just going to shift us into the most recent orders. That's 2040 and 2048. As a result of those, the governor has been kind of clear, I think, in his orders, while he's allowing non-critical sectors to return to safe workplaces. He's also stressing many times in those orders that those who can work from home should continue to work from home. However, we are entering into our busier season, and that's construction. So we know we have several street projects coming up. Our permits are starting to increase. And so it has been more challenging, I think, for engineering and our community development department, as well as our parks department, to continue to work from home. So we do have some recommendations in here to kind of start to adjust to bringing some people back to work. I would refer you down to the bottom of the memo where we do have our COVID-19 work-from-home plan, and that was what you originally saw at that emergency meeting in March, where we identified those employees who must remain on the job per the governor's order, those who could work from home, and then those who were unable to work from home. So I'll just kind of go backwards a little bit. Those who were unable to work from home, as you recall, the first two weeks after, after the governor did his stay-at-home order, those employees did go home for that two-week period. We called them back after it was extended, and so parks and streets are working and have been working. They are working staggered shifts, and we're making sure that we're implementing some social distancing. Our police management, records management text, that's another category. It's been a little challenging because of the dual authentication that is required through the police department. It's hard to send those staff to work from home and still maintain the security that's needed through the police department. So then going up to that telework or those who were able to work from home, we've modified that category and calling it now Modified Teleworking Employees. If you look at that, again, with the governor's recommendation, that those who can work from home should work from home. I, I will continue to work from home. Our community development department will start to work at City Hall on a limited basis. Our finance will continue to work from home. However, Connie and, and Pam will work, start kind of limited work from City Hall. And then, as we look down to engineering, our engineering staff will all start working from home if the council should approve this work from If the council should approve this work from home plan tonight, our recommendation would be that they return to City Hall tomorrow. They're doing things like surveying and they're more out in the field. And so it's much more, it's much easier to have them right at City Hall. I did add a category into this as well, and that's our interns. As you know, we are starting to hire our interns. That's at the very bottom of that spreadsheet. We are showing that the communications marketing person, our intern would work from home at least initially. And our code compliance would really need to work in the office. David is thinking of the code person will start a week from today, and then David will begin to work in the office. Our D I S intern and our H R intern have the ability to work from home while both parks and streets interns would not. So back up to the memo. So really trying to figure out how we balance, as you know, the governor extended the stay at home order to May 18, knowing that those who could work, should work from home, do work from home, however, allowing some of those office staff, non-facing customers to be able to return from work. So I think we put together a plan that we think will really work for City Hall. And so with that, Mr. President, if I may, there's also a section in here on the police department, and I'd like Corky to speak to that and what the police department will be doing.
Sounds good. Corky?
Thank you. So if you look at what's been outlined in the memo, probably the most simplest way I can use to describe it too is we've taken the police department and really made two departments within the one. So while half of the department is working, the other half is on their days off. Or in situations like the investigators and myself and the deputy chief, while one team is at work, working, the other is working remotely from home. So with the officers and kind of what all the patrol staff, what I alluded to with the two teams is we switched from our normal rotation, which was a four-week thing of four on, three off, four on, three off, seven on, three off, one on, three off. So we went to an eight on, six off rotation, but technically on that eighth day, the team that's been working all those days is on what I'm calling precautionary administrative leave, because that's our overlap day. That's the day where the two teams would normally work. And what we'd normally do is use two of those days a month to train. While we're not doing any face-to-face, hands-on training at this time, we're working on how we're going to accomplish some of our post mandates as far as defensive tactics. That in in January and February. So we do have firearms shoot, which we'll hope to use outdoor range and practice social distancing. But where we would normally do a lot of our scenario-based, role-based on face-to-face training, we're just not doing it now. We're going to try and do it. Hopefully, there's an opportunity this fall or late summer. So back to that schedule, and on their eighth day, that's the administrative precautionary leave. So they're not that day. The other team that's over. Other reason for that is to try and conserve and make the best use of our personal protection equipment, particularly the mask. So what we've done is issued the surgical-grade masks. Each officer currently has seven of those, and therefore each day they work. So they get placed into a paper bag unless the mask gets destroyed or suspected contamination. And so then they'll reuse that mask 14 days later with the assumption that if there was stuff on it that we weren't aware of, that hopefully the virus is beyond its time that it's exposed or that somebody could contract it. So that was part of the philosophy behind that, or why some agencies have chosen to go to that, was to conserve the P P Es. We have a record staff. What I would say is they're probably working at about 60% of the capacity. And that's what Jennifer alluded to is mostly because of devices. We don't have enough of our devices that we can run through the encryption that's required to access the system. So we've devised a schedule where, with the exception of Julie, our police administrative supervisor, she continues to work full-time. She'll intermittently come into the office when needs be to access certain systems that she can't remotely or to handle paper that we don't have a choice. Same with a couple of the others. They're coming in intermittently one day a week. The computers that we can. So we have, I think, four computers. One stays with Julie all the time. The other three were rotating to the other five staff. So I think our goal is, I got to be honest with you, it's been really helpful not to have them there during the construction project. If there was, like Kevin had alluded to, I said this before, if there was a silver lining in the virus thing, it was that it allowed us to do that front counter work, the glass replacement, the wall treatment and the vestibule construction and not have our staff there. So I don't, that saved us a lot of money. And it also saved us some major headaches and inconvenience because there has been some challenges just based upon noise, she does, and navigating back and forth in our building. But we were doing a pretty good. And that's off to Sean and Laurie for turning our meeting room into temporary workstations for the staff. So I'll answer any questions if there is any.
I have a question, Corky. Been going over at the police department. I mean, have you been operating pretty effectively? All things considered, with people, the administrative staff working remotely and things like that?
You know, it's been surprisingly good. I think it's a combination of things. One, we changed some business practices. The officers have to type all their reports now. We're not transcribing statements. We're going to cross that road when this ends and see what the prosecutors request. So they're piling up. And I think what we'll do is just the bare bones as needed when they request them. But for the most part, processing our police reports and the state reporting and that stuff, it's been going surprisingly well. When I did an interview for Lakeland TV a week or so ago, I did run some numbers. April 15th, when you compared 2019 to 2020, we were down 400 I C Rs. So where we normally have 1,400 I C Rs in a one-month period, we only had 1,000. I'll be honest with you, a lot of that's probably traffic enforcement. We've really asked the guys to pick and choose serious violations and not unnecessarily expose themselves. And I'd like to think a big part of it is to track, traffic volumes are down on the roads. When I do my monthly report this month, I'll be curious, I'll run for you how many car crashes we've had. Because the car crashes are, have really drastically reduced too. So I think the lack of the volume of traffic on our roadways has significantly impacted how busy our officers are with crashes and with traffic violations. I can tell you from firsthand experience, we are still writing tickets. I came in the other morning and had a truck going 66 on Washington at North A Street. So I wrote a ticket. I mean, we're still, the violations are still there. It seems like the ones that we're seeing are more significant than what we normally do. But really surprisingly, so far, things have been going good. You know, some challenges that we've had to deal with is the jail and the reduction of who they'll accept. You look at like today's arraignment list, after a weekend like this, this time of year, there'd probably be anywhere from 12 to 20 people. There's four people for the whole county. Three of them are R R S and they're domestic disputes.
Yeah, hang on a second. So that was going to be another question I had is how are the complaints, are you getting a lot more complaints? Is there less crime, more crime? Forget that traffic stuff, but like individuals calling, having been victimized somehow.
At first, it was significantly down. It took a nosedive. I come in the morning and I couldn't believe the lack of calls we had. But it is slowly creeping back up. We had some car prowling thefts, some other stuff, I think with the weather getting nicer and now people probably sick for this. Or the activity level, I think, is going to start to get closer to normal because the last, I'd say, week, we've been busier.
Okay, thank you. Jan, you had some questions?
Yes, I do. I'm concerned about the mask we're using. You know, that's usually how you recommend it. Is there anything that the city could do to see a way of assisting so we wouldn't be reusing those masks?
That's a good question. Right now, the thing is, we're not going to reuse the mask if we have a known exposure. And keep in mind, these aren't the N95 masks. What we're really doing is holding back on using those until we have more reported cases and it's more of an issue in our community. So right now, the masks we're wearing are more just a precautionary. And it's to promote to get the officers acclimated to wearing it. But I don't have concerns with how we're reusing these ones now. But when it gets to the point where we have to use N95s, we probably won't be able to. There's some different theories up there about cleaning them with ultraviolet lights and some other treatments. But when we get to the N95 level, we probably won't be reusing those ones at all.
Well, Mr. Chair, again, a question. Would the city or and the police department or even the city, if we do, would they be would allow these fabric masks that are being made? And the reason I say that, they would be able to be washed you know, after a working day, which would be important. And then, you know, just two or three of them and just rewash them would be probably a little bit more comfortable. And you could even put filters in some of these. So I guess I would ask the police department and the city if that is something they would be amenable to. Because if they would, I would really like to start trying to get that for everybody.
We have accepted a large amount of cloth-made masks from the public. I got to be honest with you, the surgical ones that we've got are lightweight and they're quicker on and off. And the staff does seem to like those better than the cloth ones. We started with cloth ones and we do, we washed them ourselves. We had several donations. We do have a pretty good stockpile of cloth ones now to fall back on. These, the surgical ones, I should have brought one. I normally have one with me so I could show you. They're more comfortable. They're easier to take on and off than the cloth ones that we tried.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, thanks, Corky.
So thank you, Mr. President. It's kind of a nice segue into our discussion. So should the council approve this plan tonight? One of the things that we would be doing is sending a letter to all of our staff about the requirements for social distancing and keeping their areas clean. I know Chief Holmes, there's a fire, so I don't know if we lost him, if he ran out to a fire. But Chief Holmes is working on a preparedness plan that we will be bringing to the council at a future meeting. But just know that one of the things we are looking at is making sure that we have enough sanitizer and bleach and making things good. Tim, you are back. Take it away.
I'm itching and screaming in my seat here. Yes, we will continue to work on that plan. We're making sure that we have the necessary supplies. So when we do go back to work, that we're protecting our employees and doing what's recommended as far as the necessary cleaning of workspaces, meeting rooms, those types of things. So we're doing pretty good on supplies as far as hand sanitizer. We picked up that bleach that Alderman Bevins recommended a few, probably three or four weeks ago now. So we have that. I picked up numerous spray bottles here today. So again, we're just continuing to work on those things and also just preparing the documentation as to who's going to do what and what needs to be done each day or throughout the day.
So, Mr. President, before we transition into parking, I'm not sure if there are any other questions about the proposed stay-at-home work plan as we transition at least into having some staff come back to work. And I think any of us would be happy to answer any questions on that part, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair? This is Jan. When is the planned return to work date? It is going to be the 18th or what?
Mr. President, Alderman Lambert, so I think right now, the people that are identified in that spreadsheet at the bottom of the memo that was sent in afternoon, those employees would be returning to work on Wednesday. If you recall the cleaning crew was in, service master was in to clean all of City Hall tomorrow. All of our offices are being put back together and engineering is moving into their permanent location on the third floor. So I think city engineer Sandy's intent was to have his guys come back on Wednesday. Paul, is that correct?
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. So I suppose you want a motion to adopt or accept this updated work-from-home plan?
I'd like to move to approve staff's plan to implement governor's orders, what is that, 2040, 2048 in regards to COVID-19?
Second, Stunek.
A motion by Pritchett, a second by Stunek to adopt the updated work-from-home plan. Is there any discussion? We'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson? Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the next part of the memo was to talk about parking. As you know, the executive order that the governor released on Thursday, 2048, does allow businesses, including retail stores and other businesses that sell, contain or repair goods that can be picked up outside without entering the place of business, can open. So really, what does that mean? That's curbside pickup. The city council agreed at their April 6 meeting to not enforce parking restrictions because businesses weren't open at that and now the businesses are beginning to reopen. As a result, we've heard from a number of our businesses asking the council to resume enforcing parking restrictions. We have also heard about the possibility of maybe designating a curbside spot in front of a business. Our committee, which again included Alderman Pritchett, talked about that this morning quite a bit. And our thought was, or our recommendation to council tonight is to start with not enforcing parking and see how that goes between now and May 18. And then we may want to bring something back to the council at the May 18 meeting if the curb side delivery is not working well, even with enforcing parking restrictions. So, Mr. President, I'll stop and ask any questions.
Can you clarify that recommendation? Are we, we are enforcing parking until the 18th or we are not enforcing two-hour parking?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's another thing that we discussed this morning. Our recommendation would be that we would start enforcing parking on May 11. The reason there is a delay between now and May 11 is that would give us the opportunity to notify everybody and really get the word out for those who have been parking downtown. It would just give us a little bit of time to make sure that we're sharing with residents that we are, once again, going to be enforcing parking restrictions.
Okay, so it'd be a week from today, upon the committee's recommendation, a week from today. Did you, and you discussed the curbside, but did you discuss the possibility of allowing business owners just to put their own sandwich board up in front saying, this is my curbside spot, please respect it, but with no enforcement mechanisms and no city enforcement of removing signs in the right of way? Jennifer, anybody?
You know, we didn't really talk too much about the possibility of having stores do themselves. We did look at putting up signage and the amount of time it would take to make official signage. And the cost is pretty prohibitive. What our thought was, it was to reestablish the parking restrictions and then see if there's still a need to allow shop owners to ask for, you know, the ability to put up a sandwich sign or something else along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did hear from a couple of business owners, specifically heard from Teresa Woodward, who owns Cattails. She actually went around to convince all the downtown businesses and asked them She actually went around to approach all the downtown businesses and asked them this question. There was only one owner that really kind of requested that short-term parking and it's only because of a physical ability. Although, otherwise, no one else was requesting that 15-minute kind of designated curbside pickup spot. Additionally, Chief McQuiston shared that when it comes to enforcement, it's very difficult to do 15 minutes. And someone had to call and say, "Someone's been parked in 15 minutes X amount of time." They have to go down there and then wait 15 minutes to see if the vehicle has not moved. So, there was an enforcement issue with that. We felt that if we offered them to have that 15 minute, there might be that expectation of enforcement. And that's where we decided, let's start by enforcing and then see where we come on the 18th.
Alderman Bevins?
Mr. Chair, I believe there is a 15-minute parking space in front of Cocoa Moon on the north side of Laurel at the corner of Sixth and Laurel. And that's a city sign. That's not a homemade sign. And whether we enforce it or not, I don't know. But we do have precedence for a 15-minute parking downtown, I think.
And I believe, Mr. President, Chief McQuiston can speak to the calls they get about that spot.
I believe there's a 15 or 20 in front of the art gallery, too. But yeah, my question wasn't really so much revolving around putting up city-owned signs for a temporary period of time, but just something way more low-key where we allow business owners to put out a little sign saying, "Hey, this is my curbside to go", and just hoping people honor it. And then, the city not enforcing that they have signs in the public right-of-way, which we do not allow.
Mr. Chair?
Jan?
Mr. Chair, I do like your idea. I think it would be a good test, good test project for them to do that. We would have to, you know, we could designate, you could only have one sign or two signs max. But I think that would be a good testing. And I really don't feel comfortable enforcing the parking right now, the parking right now. I think it'd be too early.
Okay, does, any other thoughts, Tad?
Yeah, this is Tad. President Johnson, I do like that idea of allowing the businesses to kind of put up their own sign, you know, knowing that there's no city enforcement going along with that. But I guess I do like the, you know, resuming the enforcement. I think, can we add the context of saying, you know, "This is because of the curbside", you know, "Because of the governor's executive order, the changes to it", and just make it known that that's why we're resuming that. I think just providing that context would be helpful, so it's not just an arbitrary decision from the city to start doing that. Possible.
I like that, Taylor. Jennifer?
Mr. President, Alderman Erickson, I think that was really the discussion on the committee, too, on delaying the reinforcement or starting to enforce parking again until May 11, just so that we were able to get word out. I would assume that a lot of our tenants who are living down there are now parking on Seventh and Eighth and Laurel. So, really, just to give them an opportunity to say, "Hey, by the way, the city is going to start enforcing again a week from today." So, that was the reason for our recommendation being May 11.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion, I suppose, unless anybody else has questions.
Mr. Chair?
I'll take a stab at it. I would like to move that the city begin enforcement of the parking, starting May 11, and allow shop owners to put a non-enforceable sign dedicating one curbside pickup space, if they so please.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion by Pritchett and a second by Lambert. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? W Erickson?
Yeah.
Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Is there any other action you need on COVID-related stuff tonight, Jennifer?
No, but again, thank you for your patience with this. As you know, the information is coming out. We're having a very short period of time by which we have to respond. So, we really appreciate your flexibility in allowing this to be sent out to all of the council later. Thank you all.
Yeah, excellent, and great work to city staff and Jennifer. And thanks again, Alderman Pritchett, for meeting with them to keep things rolling along as things are changing so fast in these times. That moves us on to item number nine, new business. Nine A is the first reading of proposed ordinance 1507 and ordinance amending Brainerd City Code Section 421 Uniform Fire Code. Tim?
Yes, thank you. This is just a update to our current fire code. In March 31, 2020, the state adopted the 2020 State Fire Code. So, this ordinance would just amend our city code to reflect the adoption of the 2020 State Fire Code. Along with that, we've added a couple of appendices that, some we've had in there and just been renamed, and a couple additions. I can give you just a brief description on those. Appendix K refers to ambulatory care. Again, just giving us the ability, with some options, to assess minimal fire and safety requirements for buildings with ambulatory care in them. N refers to indoor trades and exhibits. Again, some of these are already in the State Fire Code, but these deal with more complex trade show issues that we just have the potential to see with the new development at the NP space and their ability to offer a larger space. These deal with more complex trade show exhibits, like two-story covered booths and stuff like that. Appendix O has just been renamed from, it was previously K, which we had adopted previously in 2016. And that just deals with barbecues on balconies and patios. And then, P is, refers to emergency response radio coverage. And that's something that Chief McQuiston and I have been working on with the school district currently. And this just gives us those guidelines to follow. The school district has been extremely receptive into making sure that our emergency radios are working within all of their schools. And this, you know, they'll do a study and they'll follow these recommendations. But they've been doing it voluntarily at this point. But this just gives us the guidance and the recommendations to require those type of additions in these larger buildings where radio coverage sometimes becomes an issue deeper down into the building or with the concrete steel construction and stuff like that. So, that's just a quick, brief description of those. The other striked-out areas are just to clean up the ordinance. Those are not needed any longer. Those sections have been changed within the state code. So, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Thanks, Tim. I guess we're looking for a dispense with the first reading.
So moved, Bevins.
Chair? Second, Lambert.
Motion by Bevins, second by Lambert. Any discussion?
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to nine B, resolution receiving feasibility report and calling a public hearing on improvement number 1405, Old Stonebridge Trail Final Lift. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you all are well aware, we, earlier in the year, we approved, or in concept, to getting the Old Stonebridge Trail Final Lift put on. This is a road up off of Riverside Drive that, back when it was constructed in 2004, 2005, the first lift of asphalt was put down, and it was left that way. So, there's about a two-inch lip at the curb line, and the structures and things need to be raised up, and the final lift needs to be installed. So, the council approved putting that into our five-year capital improvement plan and assessing 100% of the cost to the adjacent property owners as would have been done back when it was originally constructed. This resolution here to note and sets the public hearing for June 1, 2020, which would be the improvement hearing, to hear testimony for or against the proposed improvement, which consists of about an $80,000 overlay on Old Stonebridge Trail and some sanitary sewer adjustments that we don't typically assess for. Obviously, the improvement is feasible and cost-effective as this, it was never done in the first, and it should be done to protect the assets and infrastructure that we have in the road itself. So, if there's any questions, I can answer them now.
Paul, I have one. How much would this have cost in 2004, or whenever it was originally done?
I would anticipate probably about, you know, 25% less.
Yeah. Should have gotten her done then, but it's 100% assessable. Any other questions? I'll look at the motion, Bevins.
I have a motion, Mr. Chair, when you're ready.
Send it.
I move that we adopt the attached resolution, receiving the feasibility report, and setting the public hearing on the improvement to take place on June 1, 2020, at 7:30 during the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second, Pritchett.
Motion, Bevins, second, Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is appoint a council member to the Region Five Children's Museum Task Force. Does anybody want to be the council member on the Region Five Children's Museum Task Force?
Mr. Chair, this is Lambert. Yeah, what do we, what happened to the committee we developed, well, a few months ago now, and we still could see people?
Yeah, Jennifer?
Mr. President, Alderman Lambert. So, the letter of intent was approved, and the master plan for W Center Nowitschoff to do the master plan. There were two things. We created a working group, which had its first meeting last week. And now, the next thing is to create the master plan. And so, I think that's what you're referring to. I think the park board already did appoint somebody. It'll be on the EDA agenda and also on the planning commission agenda. So, now, we're looking for a council member and community members.
Does that answer your question, Jan?
I think so, because I know I was one of the, I was going to kind of hold two roles there. One was council, and one was planning.
Did plan, did appoint you?
But we haven't done anything on that yet. You know, and I think the other one, Dave Bedeau, was going to do it, was going to do it, too. But I know he's in a different role now. But yeah, I wouldn't mind being on the master plan if that's okay with the commission, the council.
You would like to be the council liaison to the Region Five Children's Museum?
Yes, I would, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah. What was that?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Bevins, second by Pritchett, to approve Jan to be the council liaison to the Region Five Children's Museum Task Force. Any discussion? Seeing the mayor with his hand up, I will take a question.
My question is, under the item there, it says, "A task force is to be established with representatives", it says two council members on this. Are we just appointing a liaison, or am I reading this incorrectly?
I didn't read it. You tell, read it to me, Dave.
Well, as it says in, excuse me here, item number three of the letter that is in our packet here, it says, "A task force is to be established with, will be responsible for the site master plan processing. The task force will include nine to 11 members, including the following: two council members, one EDA, one planning commission, one park board, three R5 CM members." So, I'm just...
So, we're going to, we'll need a second task force member out of our group here. But let's vote on this motion to appoint Jan. We'll vote. Any other discussion on it? Seeing none, vote by roll.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, so we need to appoint a second. I know it says council member, but I do know when Mayor Bedeau was on the council, he wanted to be a liaison. If the council is amenable to it, we can appoint the mayor. Alderman Pritchett?
I move to appoint Mayor Bedeau to this committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mayor Bedeau. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair? I like Mayor Bedeau to do everything. But there's also an EDA member, and, you know, we have some council members that could fulfill both. Now, I don't see any reason why we can't appoint two different people to those spots. But I just bring that up because Alderman Lambert satisfies the council member and planning commission in that, you know, I don't know if there's a benefit to that. Maybe not. I bring it up.
Thank you. That's a good point, because we almost have an EDA quorum here right now. Actually, we may have a quorum. Because it may be you, or Wayne, or myself being the EDA liaison to that commission.
Mr. Chair, this is Lambert. And that's, I guess that's what I was remembering more, was this number three, where we did do a double duty on a lot of this stuff, so. But having said that, I suspect with the fact that we have three members from the R5 CM, that perhaps we would want a little bit more representative from the city on the board.
And I agree with the latter half of your point there, Jan. I think the more representing the city on that commission is going to increase the likelihood that the outcome is good for the city. Kelly?
Correct.
I agree. Let's vote on Dave Bedeau.
Okay, any other discussion? Any discussion on Dave? Seeing none, we'll vote.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes. Yes.
W Erickson? Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Is that all we need to do for Region Five right now?
And Mr. President?
Jennifer?
Yep, and then the other thing would be to open it up to three community members, and that we would take applications.
Okay, Kelly, you had something?
I just thought the EDA meets Thursday and could nominate an EDA member then to satisfy that. And being that the planning commission has not nominated Jan Lambert, it's possible that we could fill all our spots and not double up any. And I just wanted to point that out. It may be a recommendation to the planning commission not to pick Jan Lambert, only to put more representation from the city on that committee. I thought that was a good idea.
Thank you, Kelly. So, I think a motion to open up for applications through our traditional committee application process for three citizens in Brainerd to apply to serve as at-large members of this commission.
And Mr. Chair, we would ask that, though, we take applications until the 13th, so that can be... the 13th, so that can be on your agenda on May 18th for your consideration for appointment.
Okay. A motion. Jan?
I'll make that motion if nobody's done that.
Second.
Second. Motion by Lambert, second by Pritchett to open up applications for three at-large citizens of Brainerd to serve on this commission, and application period will be open through May 13th. Any discussion? End of Business Day, May 13th, 4:30. Hearing no discussion, we will vote by roll call.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W. Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Brings us to number nine, D., Review Council Appointments. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the appointment, or with the resignation of Mayor Mink and the appointment of Alderman Bado as mayor, and now with the appointment of Wayne Erickson as our alderman for Wayne, our Ward Three, we now have a full council. So there are a couple of attachments to your, to the council report. One, it just shows our council assignments, who's on PNF, who's on Safety and Public Works, who the chairs are for each of those. And then next is each council member, what ward they serve, their term and title, and then what, to me, they are a liaison to. And then the next is a list of all of our boards, commissions, or committees in alphabetical order, who the appointment is made by, and who the liaison is to that board, committee, or commission. And as you can see, we have several gaps. These appointments are either made by Council President Johnson or by Mayor Bado. And with that, Mr. President, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Beavins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does not Dave Bado, the mayor's physician, come up for special election for a two-year term in 2020?
That is correct. He is with.
On our chart.
Alderman Beavins, thank you. That will be corrected, and thank you for pointing that out. My apologies.
So with that, Mayor Bado. Jan?
I, I think we need to check, change Tad Erickson, too, because I believe that is also a special election this year.
That may be. Let's, let's, let's double-check all of those documents and make sure we have everything right there, but.
I did.
Oh, Connie?
Sorry, we did just send the list of elections of who, and the mayor, and, and Tad's seat, the at-large. Those are the two that are special elections for this year that will fulfill two more year terms.
Thank you. So with that, we have a bunch of open spots. I'll toss it over to the mayor to make some appointments.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just go right down the list as listed for what the mayor needs to select. I have spoke with a handful of you, just to make sure that you have interest and/or availability on these. There was one that I missed, so hopefully we won't, we won't have too many problems with it. But let's go right down the list. We are looking at the Brainerd Public Utilities, PUC. For that, I would like to select councilman, or council president Johnson to represent that. Do you, Gabe, do you want to just go down the list, or do you want me to just do all mine, and then you go back into yours?
You just do all of yours at once, and as long as nobody has an object, if somebody has an objection, we'll pull that one out to debate it, otherwise we'll approve them all at one fell swoop.
Sounds good. All right, Cable TV Advisory Committee, for that, we'll be looking at Wayne Erickson. The, skip down here, make sure I'm not missing something. Park Board, I have selected myself to continue representing that group for the remainder of this year. And then lastly, the Rental Housing Board of Appeals. Wayne, I did not speak with you about that one, but that is a group that only meets in a very specific reason, and I would select Wayne Erickson for that role as well.
Hey, is there a motion to approve or deny, or do you want to pull out any of the appointments?
Move to approve, Beavins.
Second.
Lambert, second.
We have, we have a motion by Beavins and Pritchett to approve the slate of nominations and recommendations. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W. Erickson? Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. And I have a few appointments here, and I, maybe just two. I have two appointments, and I too called around to talk to people, but I didn't. I had the mayor do it for me, actually. So I'm going to, I'm going to recommend for the Walkable Bike Committee, Alderman Wayne Erickson, and for the Riverfront Committee, Alderman Tad Erickson.
Move to approve.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Mayor Bado?
There is the, the inclusion of the Water Tower Committee as well. And then on our list here, it lists you as being Bladeck, but you are not listed as being the liaison in the chart above.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that. Let's pass, let's vote on this motion. Any discussion about the two appointments? None? Vote.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett.
W. Erickson? Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, and that motion carries. So back to Bladeck, we have some type of spot on the Bladeck Board. Jennifer, can you explain that? Or Tyler, is he still here? Jennifer?
So as I understand, we do not, we, we have a liaison position. We are invited to attend. It is not a voting member of that board. As I understand, the city administrator and the mayor have attended that in the past. I have only been to one Bladeck Board meeting since I have taken my position. So it is a liaison, non-voting.
And appointed by, or not appointed, it just is the mayor?
Just has been the mayor. I don't know that it's ever been any official. I think it's just been an invitation to attend. I see maybe David has a comment, maybe he knows more than I do.
Mr. President, to my knowledge, in the past, with the city was attending, when Cassandra left, I kind of took that on, and I had been attending for the last five months before Jennifer came on, on behalf of the city. I think Mayor Mink, he did attend a number, number of times when he could, but he was not always present at those meetings. And those are very special meetings. The board sometimes has like, the board meeting with their government liaisons, and then sometimes they have board-only meetings. So fortunately Tyler left, he would have been able to explain exactly what they do better. It's at most once in life.
I'd be happy to volunteer to attend those meetings if, well, I'll be happy to volunteer.
Yeah, well, is that, is that, I think that's a mayoral appointment? Jennifer? Hey, make the appointment. The recommendation.
Love to recommend that Tad Erickson be our liaison for that group.
Second. Remove to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Beavins, second by Pritchett for the mayor's recommendation of Tad Erickson to serve as our council liaison to the Bladeck Board. Any discussion?
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Yes.
W. Erickson? Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Did we get everything appointed?
The only other question I had was about the Water Tower Committee.
You're, you're the man. You're the tower.
You're our beacon of hope there, Dave.
I'll give you another five bucks for a key, Jay.
They're $20.
Whoa. In the past, hasn't really been, when we formed it, like, we just kind of received five, six, seven applications, and they were all on it. I don't think it was really a recommendation vote to approve thing.
You guys selected me as your representation for that group.
For life.
Well, let's, let's reaffirm that, Alderman Beavins.
I move to keep Dave Bado chained to the water tower for life.
Lambert, second.
A motion and a second to keep Bado chained to the water tower for life.
In a suit and tie.
Mayor Bado?
In this discussionary phase, I would like to toss it out to any of you council members who would also like to get involved. You can join as a member of the, or the city as well, not, I mean, excuse me, a member, a citizen is what I'm trying to say. That's the word I'm looking for. It is a citizens' committee, and I would toss it out to any of you who would like to join as a citizen.
Duly noted. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, could, Mr. Chair, could Dave tell us all the time, could Dave tell us the time and date and time?
Yes.
That is the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so Jan, if you're interested, bring it back to us next time. We'll get you on there.
Oh, no, well, I would love to, but I'm on the planning and zoning, and that's when we need to, so.
Thank you. Anyway, we have everything appointed now. We can move on to 10 Planning Commission.
Can we vote on that?
Sorry, thank you, Alderman Pritchett. No more discussion. We'll vote on the mayor being chained to the water tower for life in a suit and tie.
Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek? Pritchett?
Most indubitably, yes.
W. Erickson?
Yes, but he does need to wear a shirt and tie.
You should go topless, or what?
Beavins? And Johnson? Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to, yeah, Jennifer?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to, to.
He's got a jacket.
Ever. We do have three council members on the EDA. That is okay. That is not a quorum of the EDA, but just wanted to bring to the council's attention that half of the EDA members are city council members, are EDA members, and nice jacket, Mr. Bado, Mr. Mayor. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Or the council's, looks like the council's doing a hostile takeover of the EDA. We're just slowly getting more and more members. Eventually, they won't, they won't exist. Brings us to 10 Planning Commission, 10 A Trinity's Children's Center CUP Amendment. Mr. Chansky?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, to this last time, CUP Amendment for Trinity Children's Center, if I can say that. The purpose of this amendment is that their initial, their original CUP limited the number of their students to 35. They've since gone more than that. They're, they are looking to increase their student occupancy, especially as we see an increased need for child here, not just in our community, but actually throughout the country. During the regular meeting on April 15th, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the CUP Amendment, eliminating any occupancy restrictions and implementing the following conditions. First, hours of operation shall be no earlier than 7:00 AM, later than 7:00 PM. That's actually a mandate by the Department of Human Services, but wanted to keep that in there as well. Trinity Children's Center shall provide the city a copy of their current and all future licenses as issued by the Minnesota Department of Human Services. And then third, the approval, the approval of this conditional use permit is conditional on the rezoning of 1420 South Sixth Street from R1 to B2. And that final reading is the next item on the agenda.
Okay, looking for, Jan, what do you have?
No, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the conditionalist permit with the conditions that have been read in.
Second, motion by Lambert, second by Beavins to approve the CUP Amendment as stated by the Community Development Director. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
W. Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Planning Commission 10B, final reading of proposed ordinance 1504, and ordinance to rezone property at 1420 South Sixth Street from a R1 single-family residential district to a B2 neighborhood business district. Mr. Chansky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is the same property, property is actually owned by Trinity Lutheran Church that houses Trinity Children's Center as one of their ministries. To make the children Trinity Center CUP into compliance with the zoning code, they have requested a rezoning from R1 single-family to B2 neighborhood business district. The planning commission recommended this, approval of this rezoning on April 20, and the city council, I should say, they did it on the 15th. The city council read their first reading of this proposed ordinance during their regular meeting on the 20th. So today, we're looking to hold the final reading of the ordinance and then consider adopting the ordinance.
Jan, do you have a motion? Yep?
Yes, I do. I have a motion to dispense with the final reading of the proposed ordinance 1504.
Second, a motion by Lambert, a second by Beavins to dispense with the final reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Yes.
W. Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Jan, do you have another motion?
Yes, I do. Motion to adapt the proposed ordinance 1504, and ordinance amending ordinance eight, number eight 12 pertaining to the zoning of the city of Brainerd for 1420 South Sixth Street from R1 to B2.
Second. We have a motion by Lambert, and a close-up second by Beavins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
T. Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W. Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, and Trinity is now good to go, right? We should be done with that one? All right.
Comfy chair.
Well, that's your office, isn't it? You should already have a comfy chair there.
I don't sit this long.
That, that's a sign of a working man.
Okay, that.
That and that nice jacket.
Done with the Planning Commission, right? That brings us to 11 Public Forum. Anybody have anything to say to the council that was not already addressed, or that is not on the agenda tonight? Teresa, you're the only member of the public here.
I got nothing.
Thank you. We'll close the public forum. That'll bring us to 12 Staff Reports. Any updates, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. This last week, we had some reports of some activity on the Buffalo Hills Trail, on the dike that goes across the Backwash ponds from BPU. Upon investigation, we found we have multiple muskrats digging underneath the, and we have a beaver problem also. So I met our street foreman, and we have some repair work that is going to need to be done on the trail. It includes about 250 feet of trail. It's going to have to be ripped up, and we're going to have to probe and see where the weeds are underneath the trail. We found the ones we could with the loader by driving the loader over the top of the trail and caving it in and, and filling those in with class five for now. and, um, caving it in and then, and filling those in with class five for now. Um, but we really need to, uh, take the pavement off the trail, um, and poke in there and see if we can find any more. And so, um, I, I estimate that with the 250 feet of trail that we have to take up, it's going to be about, um, 3,000 to 3,700 bucks to repave that. Um, and our city's street department staff can do all the other work, um, to prep that surface again. But, uh, we really need to get that straightened out too, um, so that the public is safe to use the trail. So, um, we'll be probably doing that work not next week, but the week after, once we're done street sweeping. I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that, so if they get calls about the trail being, um, tore up at a few spots, that, um, you know, kind of what's going on, so.
What, what's the solution to the wildlife? Are you going to build like a tunnel under the trail and hope they use it, or what?
So, we, uh, our street foreman Sean, he's actually a, a certified beaver trapper, and, um, and I think the season is open right now. Um, and as far as muskrats are concerned, we're going to talk with the DNR, um, conservation officer to see if we can get a nuisance permit to trap some of the, um, muskrats out of that area to protect our infrastructure through there, so.
So the solution is to just kill them all?
Well, I mean, they're causing a lot of damage, which they tend to do, so.
Police Chief McQuiston's cat looks like it could take care of a muskrat or two.
Jan, do you have something?
Yeah, I do have a question. Is this going to be an ongoing problem, or eventually they're going to stop? I mean, is this going to be something we're going to have to do every?
Lumber, uh, is that it's going to be an ongoing. If we talk to the conservation officer, we can usually just have an open, um, trapping permit for that area, um, as if they're causing nuisance conditions. Um, we do have numerous areas in town that cause, uh, beaver, or there's numerous issues around town from beavers that we've had in previous years with plugging culverts and, um, causing water back and things. So we'll probably have an open nuisance permit, and I've instructed our street foreman Sean that he can go ahead and trap in those areas to, um, relieve the nuisance on the trail, so.
Okay, thank you.
David? Thanks, Paul.
Mr. President, I just have three quick things. Uh, the Planning Commission is having a workshop this Wednesday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM, and then the EDA also has a meeting this Thursday, May 7th, also at 6:00 PM. Again, just notice for the EDA, slight time change. Normally in the past, they've met at 7:30 AM. They're going to meet at 6:00, 6:00 PM on Thursday. Uh, information how the public can participate in those meetings can be found on the city's website. And then finally, just want to encourage people again, if you have not part, uh, participated in the census, to do so, you can do so at www.my2020census.gov. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Got another one?
Yeah, sorry, one more thing. Um, we did, um, take Riverside on May 1st. Riverside Drive, uh, is now a city street. With that, um, we had some, um, some folks call in that the speed limit was dropped to 30 miles an hour. That is a statutory thing. So, uh, the speed limit on Riverside Drive is now 30. Um, with the project coming next year, um, and the payment we received from Corwin County that will be getting restripped also. So, um, not only will be, um, you know, hopefully enforcing that 30 mile an hour speed zone through there where we see quite higher speeds because of the four lane, um, when it gets restripped, it should also help with the calming of traffic and, uh, the incorporation of some bike lanes and things to improve pedestrian safety, so.
Yeah, that street makes a 66 on Washington Street look pedestrian. Jennifer?
So I have two quick items. One, just want to keep you updated on the farmers market. We have now reached out to four organizations, all who have declined to take the lead on it. Um, we're still moving forward, and we hope to have something before the council on May 18th to consider. Um, right now, I think what we're looking at is maybe an option for our Parks Department to help coordinate this, since they probably won't be doing programming this summer. So, uh, Parks Director Saylor will be talking to the park board about the option to do that. We also have two interns that will be starting that could help support that as well. So stay tuned. You'll have more information on May 18th. Again, I'll just reinforce that, uh, farmers markets are clearly exempt in the governor's stay-at-home order, and in fact, are being encouraged as long as you can safely follow the recommendations from the CDC. So, uh, more information to come. Secondly, what I wanted to mention is, uh, just talking about funding for programs. The EDA at their meeting on the 7th will be talking about, uh, what kind of programs could potentially be created to help our business owners once they are, uh, back up and running. So I would expect that after the EDA's discussion, you will have that also on the council's agenda, and I'm sure that David will be following up on that. So you've heard enough from me tonight. That's all I have, unless anybody has questions.
Mr. Chair? Just regarding the, um, the farmer's market, we did discuss closing a street, and there was at least one downtown business that commented on that. Hopefully Jennifer or Tony, if Parks takes it, got that covered.
Mr. Chair? So Alderman Bevins, thank you for saying that. We, I have spoken now to several downtown businesses, while the, of them do support it. Uh, Bob and Franz has been adamantly, um, opposed. And then also, I, I have reached out to a couple that I have not heard back from. So, um, whether that ultimately is a recommendation or not, we're not sure. I think a couple of things that we're looking at is there a parking lot that is bigger that potentially could be used? Is there another space? I know the intent of that farmer's market really was to try to get people downtown Brainerd and shopping at our stores in downtown Brainerd. So again, I think more to come on a recommendation.
Thank you. Anything from Corky? No. Uh, mayor's report.
Oh, the mayor just wants to thank everybody for, uh, the meeting tonight. Think it's going smoothly. Really appreciating, uh, everyone's ability to operate their computers, Kevin Stunek especially. Congratulations. Uh, other than that, nothing.
Thank you, mayor. Then we're going to just go in order on my screens. We'll start with Alderman Pritchett.
I have nothing to report.
So is, uh, Alderman Bevins?
Nothing to add.
Alderman Stunek?
Nothing to add.
Alderman Tad Erickson?
Uh, nothing to add.
Alderman Wayne Erickson?
Who knows, add anything?
Well, maybe next time. And Jan Lambert?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, I do have two things to add. We're not getting out of here that quick. Sorry, hiring committee. We did, we did, uh, reduce our number of applicants, and we are doing interviews on May 27th, so we are hoping to have a job offer out after that and have an executive director in place in June. And while the Major League Baseball is shut down, the South Korean Baseball League is starting up tomorrow. They signed a deal with ESPN. They are going to have, we're going to have baseball games on ESPN. So just so you know, the LG Twins start tonight at midnight. If you want a Twins team to follow. It's just a FYI. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Alderman Pritchett?
I just wanted to say really quickly, I lied. I do have something to report. Uh, I think we can be extremely proud of how our staff is dealing with the COVID-19 emergency, the amount of work that they're putting in, the amount of considerations that they're giving residents, citizens, community. Um, kudos to them, and I move to adjourn.
Second, Lambert.
A motion by Pritchett, a second by Lambert, and we'll vote by roll call.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
I suppose.
Pritchett?
Yes.
W Erickson?
I was told the meetings go to 10 o'clock.
This guy's way.
You can stay on till then.
That may be a nay. And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, and we are adjourned.
Skip again.
What's Bevins' vote?
Wow, Bevins?
Maybe we don't care, Kelly.
I'm not voting.
Bevins.
Richard.
Abstain.
Abstain, that's all I was going to say, abstain.
Never abstained, ever.
Take care, everybody.
Bye, Al.
Thanks.